Thank you.
Mr. Klein, I wanted to start off, as we do with all of our interviews, with predetermined questions that we sent to you in advance. And I'll go through those and then turn it over to some of my colleagues who might have some additional questions. So I'll start off with the first one, which is, why would you like to be the interim council member for District 5? And what do you hope to accomplish in that role?
Well, my wife, Kelly, and I have lived in Silver Spring for 18 years. Our children, Sarah and Schroeder, attend school at Eastern Middle School and Highland View Elementary. And they're actually with me in my little cheering section back here. So we love our community. We have a big stake in it. And we've always tried to do our part to make it better. The reason I applied for this position on the council is that I see it as a great opportunity to serve in a new way and at a time when District 5 has more challenges and opportunities, I would say, than any other part of the county. If I am selected for the position, my first priority would be to give District 5 a credible voice in the budget and capital plan discussion. I think that's very important for a district that has the highest unemployment, the highest crime rate, and definitely faces a number of challenges. I would like to creatively involve and engage citizens in the budget discussions, as we do in Baltimore, hosting hands-on workshops, using the web and social media to connect people in a new way to the budget. My second priority would be to make progress on sensible development and revitalization in the Route 29 corridor. If we get that right, it will create a lot of jobs and affordable housing for District 5. It has to be coupled with improved transportation options. And that's why I do think we need to have a discussion about how to finance the Bus Rapid Transit Plan. I want to make sure we provide excellent constituent services and don't miss a beat from the work that Valerie Ervin was doing and her staff. And I would want to spend a lot of time traveling around the district, talking with community groups. And what I hear from them would guide my work in a lot of ways. And then finally, I would want to make sure that whoever wins the seat has a smooth transition to the council.
Excellent. Thank you very much. What civic, professional, or other experience qualifies you for this appointment?
What distinguishes me for the appointment is my combination of professional expertise in local government, finance, and management, and a long, diverse record of civic leadership. I've been, for the past six years, I've guided Baltimore through a nearly unprecedented fiscal challenge with extraordinary results. We've closed more than $500 million in budget shortfalls while protecting and even enhancing funding for programs that demonstrate results, like youth violence prevention, job training, prenatal home visiting. And today, we have a larger fund balance and lower property tax rate than we did before the recession. We have shrinking unfunded liabilities, a $1.1 billion school construction program, and a 10-year financial plan. I don't know of any other major city that has a better story. And my work in Baltimore has earned me regard as one of the most innovative budget directors in the country. That expertise, I think, would make me an ideal replacement for Valerie Ervin on the Fiscal Policy and Operations Committee. In my civic involvement, it's ranged from leading vocal neighborhood associations to empowering voiceless immigrants and other vulnerable populations. And I haven't just sat on boards and commissions. I've been a civic entrepreneur. Just a few examples: I revived Presco, the umbrella civic organization in Silver Spring when it was dormant. And for six years, I rallied the civics around issues of common interest. And we improved pedestrian safety, street tree maintenance, and crime prevention. After I served on the Long Branch Advisory Committee, and Hans was a member of that committee, Bruce Baker and I joined forces and created Community Health and Empowerment Through Education and Research, also known as CHEER, which is a 501(c)(3) that uses data to help low-income communities in Long Branch and Tacoma Park to improve their quality of life. I also formed a statewide coalition to lobby for the Neighborhood Intervention Program, which is a state program under Community Legacy, and it invests money to address early signs of blight in otherwise stable neighborhoods and to preserve affordable housing. So I think that shows both my commitment and also a breadth, a broad perspective on community needs that I believe any council member should have.
Thank you very much. What do you see as the three most important issues, and you kind of touched on this, facing the council this year? And are there any issues that you would like to add to that list?
The first issue for me would be the budget and capital plan. I think it won't be an easy budget. The administration projects a $166 million budget shortfall, which probably isn't as bad as it sounds, but I realize that. However, there will be pressure to stay true to the six-year fiscal plan. There'll be pressure to restore cuts that were made in previous years to various services. And I'm sure there will be pressure also to fund the schools at Above Maintenance of Effort and to cut the energy tax. So all of those things combined, I think, will definitely make it a challenge. The second issue is really a set of land use and planning issues. I know you're putting the finishing touches on the zoning code rewrite. There's going to be a big decision about balancing the competing interests on the Ten Mile Creek proposed development. Then, as I referred to earlier, the White Oak Master Plan and figuring out how to get that right. And then finally, choosing a new Planning Board Chair. I know that will be happening during this coming year. The third issue is small business development, which I know the council president has made a priority. District 5 has a 75% retail capture rate, and it's actually much lower than that in several categories. That means that there's almost $1 billion that is being spent by District 5 residents outside of District 5 that could be spent in District 5 if we had the small businesses. So lots of opportunity there, potential. And I really link this to the broader strategy of attracting young professionals. I think young professionals are vital to the county's future prosperity, and we're losing them right now to the district in Northern Virginia. So I want to make sure that we find solutions there. And I do want to add a couple of issues. One, I would like to start a discussion about the county's revenue structure. Right now, 98% of general fund revenue comes from three sources. There is some significant volatility in some of those sources of funding. And I think if we plan properly for the future, the next recession won't have to be as painful to get through as this last one was. And second, I would like to have a conversation with the administration about what are we trying to achieve on the eight priorities and how are we going to get there? There are no targets set for any of the priority measures. And if you don't know where you're going, where you're trying to go, how are you going to get there? So I think that's a very worthwhile discussion for the council and the administration to have.
Thank you very much. Many of the council's land use decisions, as you kind of alluded to, balance communities' desires for further economic development and enhanced environmental protection. What factors would you look at in trying to achieve a reasonable balance in those individual cases?
Certainly, the first step is to have sound, objective data on the environmental and economic impact of any project. And we should go to great lengths to get that information. But even with the best information, these issues inevitably come down to value judgments. And I know that representing District 5, I would certainly be pulled hard in both directions because I think I can safely say that we have in District 5 more people looking for work and more people who are passionate about the environment than any other district in the county. So it's very important to balance those. But I don't think it has to be an either-or decision. There are a lot of ways that, especially being a wealthy, growing county, we ought to be able to insist that any development be compatible with the environment, and not just the environment, but also our goals for economic opportunity. And so, green building practices, live near your work, improved transit options, more walkable communities, and if necessary, reducing the scope of development to make it compatible. Those are all strategies. At the Silver Spring Citizens Advisory Board meeting last week, United Therapeutics gave a presentation about its plan for a net-zero-energy expansion. And that's the kind of development I think we want to see more of.
Thank you very much. You've actually spawned a number of lights. Number five, as you know, the operating budget for the public school system currently makes up about half of the total county operating budget. And the state Maintenance of Effort Law requires its funding be increased as enrollment increases. What factors would you look at in trying to balance the school system's request for funding above the required level with the needs of other high-priority county programs and agencies such as libraries, public safety, and the like?
Sure. Well, I think the first factor is the county's overall fiscal condition. The administration continues to project that revenues are not keeping pace with the cost of maintaining current services. And until that changes, I think that the schools need to live within the Maintenance of Effort funding level. Now, there are other considerations. Clearly, the quality of public education is the number-one priority for Montgomery County. But resident surveys show that citizens care about a lot of other things as well. They care about easing traffic congestion, fixing roads, ensuring public safety, increasing affordable housing in particular. And so, we need to balance education against those needs. Secondly, the solutions to the achievement gap lie as much outside the classroom as inside the classroom. And so, programs like prenatal health care, summer and after-school programs for youth, even the earned income tax credit, libraries, as you mentioned, they need to be properly funded as well. And funding at the Maintenance of Effort level doesn't need to mean eroding the quality of public education. I was at a MCPS budget forum a couple weeks ago, and Superintendent Starr said, "The system needs to be fiscally responsible, adjusting priorities, and finding efficiencies to accommodate new initiatives." I agree with him. And using outcome budgeting, lean methods, we can prioritize spending and find cost-saving efficiencies so that, within the Maintenance of Effort, we can still provide world-class public education.
Thank you very much. As you're, I'm sure, aware, this position requires a very large commitment of time and attention to prepare for the meetings of the council and its committees, and to interact extensively with constituents and others from both the public sector, private sector, as well as the greater community at large. In particular, during much of April and May, the council will meet five days a week as we consider the budget. Are you prepared to make this commitment of time and attention?
If I am appointed, I would resign my position in Baltimore and devote my full time to council business.
Thank you. The current professional staff who serve District 5 residents collectively have more than 20 years' experience working for the legislative branch. Would you have any reservations about retaining the current staff to maintain the continuity of service for District 5 residents?
I think the only way to be effective in this job and hit the ground running is to have a capable and experienced staff. So absolutely, my plan would be to retain the staff. I just hope that they're willing to stick it out for the remainder of the term. And I'm glad you asked the question because it does point out that part of the job of a council member is to be a manager. And I just wanted to let the council know, I've managed staffs numbering from 5 to 125. And one of the letters you received on my behalf was from Jeff Page, who was on my team at the Corporation for National and Community Service and is now the CFO at the Library of Congress. And I just wanted to read one sentence from that letter. He said, "Andrew is a proven leader and innovative problem solver, and those who follow him do so because of the pull of inspiration, not the push of willpower." I've always been proud of my ability to build and lead teams. And I know this will be, obviously, somewhat difficult situation for a staff that was hired by somebody else in coming in, but I feel confident that we can work very well together.
Excellent. And is there any actual or potential conflict of interest or anything else in your background of which the council should be aware?
My wife works part-time at Montgomery College. That's the only potential conflict I can think of.
We love Montgomery College and Dr. Pollard, so I don't think that would be a problem. Can you confirm that you do not intend to run for this seat or the council generally in this year's election?
I will not run for the council.
Excellent. And so, at this point, I will go ahead and turn it over. We have a number of lights. And the first one is Councilmember Leventhal.
Andrew, thank you very much. Appreciate all your years of service to the community and your very impressive applicant. I wasn't planning to ask any questions, but you really whetted my appetite. Do you have some new proposal for how, where our revenue base can come from?
If you appoint me, I'll let you know what it is. I do have ideas. The three sources that I was referring to are, of course, the income tax, property tax, and I'm including in there the transfer and recordation taxes, and then the energy tax. And I think the county relies too much on the income tax. You've seen how volatile that can be. You have a 10% homestead tax credit cap, which is the most that the state allows. And what that means is that, in good times, your revenue is going to shoot up faster. But when things turn around, you're going to drop faster. You have less of a parachute coming down. So those are some things to consider. How can we change the mix? You know, it may make more sense to rely more on the property tax, less on the income tax, have a lower homestead cap. Energy tax, I know, has been controversial in terms of the large increases. But I also understand that that's a broad-based tax. It takes in money from the federal installations that we have here in the county. And you want to have broad-based taxes with low rates, and you want taxes that are progressive and don't skew the economy. So there are all kinds of considerations, but I definitely think it's worth a discussion.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Leventhal. I'll turn to Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Klein, for your service to the community and your very impressive experience and for your interest in serving on the county council. I've had two questions I've asked of each applicant. One is about Maintenance of Effort. You discussed it in your response. The question, though, is, do you think, given the inflexibility of the Maintenance of Effort law, that the county should actively work to persuade the General Assembly to make the law more flexible?
I have direct experience with the rigidity of the Maintenance of Effort law. I won't bore you with the details, but suffice it to say jurisdictions cannot capture savings from efficiencies and other actions they take to reduce costs. And that's a concern. And I would favor changes to the law that spell out more clearly what's required for And also give more credit to jurisdictions that have overfunded Maintenance of Effort in past years.
Thank you. And the second question is regarding salary levels. Last year, County Executive Legate proposed salary increases of approximately 7% to 10% for each of the two years, this being the first year. As you know, salary and personnel costs drive budgets to a large degree. Do you think that level of increase was about right, or do you think it should have been reduced?
If I'm not mistaken, all of your colleagues voted for that contract, so you're asking me to step into some dangerous territory here. And before I do, I want to state for the record that Baltimore did better by its employees over the last five years than any other regional jurisdiction. Now, I hate to second-guess council decisions where I wasn't involved in the discussion, but I will share a couple of thoughts. One is, I don't think it's necessary to make up for pay freezes of the past. There were a lot of sacrifices that had to be made to get through this recession and aftermath, including by the taxpayers. And I don't hear any proposals to refund them the extra taxes that they paid over these past several years. So, you know, I would have liked to consider a more modest increase that could be sustained over the long term.
Thank you. And the only thing I would add is, we have taken the energy tax down by 20% from the increase. So we're working on that one. Thank you, though.
Yes, I understand.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Andrews. Councilmember Reamer.
Thank you for your testimony. Can you describe a little bit about the performance-based budgeting changes that you made in Baltimore, please?
Sure. So we have been, in Baltimore, we've been using what we call outcome budgeting for the last five years. And what that does is essentially, it turns the traditional budget process on its head. So instead of starting, your starting point being what an agency spent the year before, you're instead looking at, what are we trying to accomplish in the coming year and going forward? And instead of allocating funding by agency, we allocate it by priority outcome. So in Baltimore, better schools, safer streets, stronger neighborhoods. And we have results teams made up of employees and citizens who review service-level proposals from our agencies. They're each given their allocation, and they recommend to the mayor the investment portfolio that they think would make the greatest use of the funding available to achieve the outcomes that we're looking for. And we've had tremendous success. We've made it through the recession and its aftermath without ever having to resort to across-the-board cuts. I mentioned earlier that we were able to protect and even enhance funding for programs that worked well. We shined the light on programs that were not working well, including ones that, I mean, we eliminated some programs that, you know, a lot of people can't believe we touched because they're very well-meaning. Things like mentoring children of prisoners and a Creative Baltimore Fund and a program that helps high school dropouts prepare for careers. We eliminated them because they could not show that they were effective. They couldn't demonstrate it. And this process has also allowed us, we had a situation this fiscal year where one agency made a proposal to take over a program that another agency was running. It's an early childhood education program, saying they could serve 1,200 more kids in the summer to deal with summer learning loss and for the same amount of money. And that's the kind of thing we're looking for. It is a competition for resources, and it brings out innovation and creativity.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Reamer. Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Klein, for coming over. You obviously have extraordinary experience, and it's amazing, all the things that you have done. I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions. They're a little bit more district-centered, especially after the redistricting. As you know, things changed considerably for that particular district. And you did already, I think, refer to the White Oak Fairland Gateway Science Master Plan, and I appreciate that that was one of the questions. But one of them that caught my attention was a letter from the Northwood Four Corners Civic Association, where they illustrated that, you know, after the appointment and an election, they would have had six different individuals representing them on the council in the city area. And just like them, there are other, obviously, neighborhoods who are in the same situation. And so, what would you say to residents of those areas of the district, given that they're obviously very anxious about yet another change?
Sure. I guess all I could really do is offer to sit down with them, listen to them. That's a great civic association. I'm sure you read their newsletter. I mean, it's one of the most substantive civic association newsletters I've ever seen. So they know what they're talking about, and I could learn a lot from them. So I'm definitely looking forward to meeting with them. Obviously, I can't help that there's been, you know, the redistricting and other turnover in representation for their part of the county. All I can do is offer that, you know, I'm willing to listen and work with them and do my best to represent them.
Thank you. Also, related, I think, to the redistricting, we did receive a letter from the NAACP, the Montgomery County Chapter. And they make, obviously, reference to the fact that now, the particular, this district, District 5, because of the changes, especially the east side of New Hampshire, now it's a district that is majority African-American and continental African, with some very specific issues affecting those communities. They make reference to the fact that they would like whoever is selected to reflect or elected to reflect the community. But I think, more than anything, it's a concern about some specific issues that may be affecting those communities. And what is your opinion about that? Do you have any insights into some of those particular issues? And how would you respond to these concerns?
Well, it certainly is the most diverse district in Montgomery County. And I think that the last three people who've been elected from the district reflect that. And certainly, they were elected not because of their skin color, but because of the fact they were the best candidates and best qualified. And I would expect the council will use the same criteria in making this appointment. I think the issues for that community are jobs, affordable housing, and the achievement gap. And certainly, the White Oak Fairland Master Plan, revitalizing Burtonsville, those are things that are going to create jobs. So we need to make progress there. And I also think, if we do it right, it should also increase affordable housing. And in terms of the achievement gap, I mentioned earlier, I do think that the solutions lie not only in the classroom but outside the classroom. And so, within a responsible spending plan, I know that we can target resources to what's working and make sure that the needs of all the communities in District 5 are met.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Navarro. Last question for Councilmember Alrich.
Like George, I wasn't going to ask anything either, but your comments about Baltimore and the budget are intriguing.
Last question for Councilmember Alrich.
Like George, I wasn't going to ask anything either, but your comments about Baltimore and the budget are intriguing. And I'm wondering, like, how long did it take you to... And I'm wondering, how long did it take you to implement that change? I can't imagine somebody thought it up in January and implemented in April. So how long did it take to implement? And once it was implemented, then you made decisions about what programs are working and not working. Did you find that the programs, then, were relatively stable over time? Because it's hard to imagine how you would deal with an ever-shifting workforce if things led to drastic changes every year.
Sure. So we, I arrived in April of 2008. We spent that summer working with agencies to redefine their programs in a more citizen-centric way and to develop performance measures for every service that they were providing. So we were going a step beyond city stat, pushing performance measurement out to every corner of city government. So we did the fiscal 10 budget the traditional way, and then we were ready, it took us about, so it took about a year lead time to get ready for doing the fiscal 11 budget using the outcome budgeting approach. And yes, I mean, the first year or two are always the, you get the sort of low-hanging fruit in the process. And we're actually, now, we've taken steps to take a biennial budgeting approach. Outcome budgeting does involve more work than the traditional process, but I think it's far more strategic. But it does require agencies to justify their services in a more robust way. It takes, there's a lot of time with results teams, meeting with agencies. So it's a very involved process, and we decided that we don't need to do this every year. But I will say that even though the low-hanging fruit was picked the first few years, we were still finding more value. And I mentioned the one agency, competing to take over a program from another agency. We've had a few examples of that. We've had agencies collaborating. For example, the Fire Department and the Health Department got together and started a program where nurses reach out to the so-called frequent flyers, people who call 911 constantly, and figure out, well, what's the core issue here? And that has really cut down on their calls and made that service more efficient.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Klein. I do believe that's the last question, so I do want to thank you very much for your willingness.